Good morning, we'll declare the meeting open. So I'll call the meeting to order please. So welcome to our council meeting for the 24th of May and I'd like to provide a particular welcome this morning to the very full public gallery that we've got. We have a number of students from New Zealand Broadcasting School here this morning. Welcome, great to have you at our meeting. I'll call for apologies and I have an apology for lateness from Yanni Johansson and from the mayor and from Raf Manji. So they're all apologies for lateness. I've got apologies for early departure from Jamie Gough now, from David Easton, from Jimmy Chen. And depending on the timing of meeting, Dave East may be a partial absence rather than early departure. And Mike? Early departure from Mike Davidson? Any advance on that one? Aaron?
I've got to be home by 11:30 tonight.
I'd like to think we can accommodate that.
Also got early departures from the mayor and councillor Manji.
And early departures from the mayor and councillor Manji, right, okay.
Are you...
Okay, so I'm happy to move those apologies. Do I have a second? Sarah Templeton. All those in favour, against, that's carried. So then we move to declarations of interest and obviously there are some conflicts of interest around the appointment of directors that comes in the public excluded part of the agenda. Not aware of anything else that's been indicated. So now let's move to item three, public participation. We have two public forum items this morning and I'd like to invite Natalie Wales to the table who's going to speak to us about Christchurch Hospital car parking. So Natalie, thank you very much indeed for joining us. The public forum part of the meeting provides five minutes for you to address councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Natalie Wales and I'm a concerned citizen and I've taken time off work today because I'm so concerned about the current parking situation at the Christchurch Hospital. In particular, the safety of our nurses and health workers, particularly those on night shift or early morning shifts. Also the public accessing A&E especially at night time, family members and friends visiting very sick loved ones in the ICU, those people without patient appointments who have injuries or severe illnesses. I've had to access A&E myself and I know firsthand how difficult finding a car park can be. Last year I was keeping my friend company at hospital as her husband underwent life-threatening major surgery and I had to leave her several times to go and shift my car so I wouldn't be clamped or towed. There were no close car parks available at that time either. I found the whole situation very stressful and the parking just added to that situation. I know that although the park and ride shuttle from Dean's F can be very helpful to some people, to most people it's quite far away from the hospital and standing around in winter in the cold and wet is not great along with the puddles and potholes in the car park itself which are all issues which I'm sure you're all aware of that need addressing. I think we definitely need a car park building close to the hospital especially to replace the one that was lost in the earthquakes. And we also I think should have some designated car parks especially for the A&E department. I personally would like to see a working group put in place that involves representatives from members of the public including myself if that's possible, health sector workers, the Christchurch City Council, the DHB and also health patient advocates. I realise that this is a complex issue that it affects a number of different organisations and that of course funding is always an issue. But while things are being worked out, our people and staff at the hospital I feel are being put at risk. For me, I'm speaking on behalf of all those vulnerable and powerless people who know there is an issue but just don't have the time or energy to do anything about it. And for myself, I would like to be part of the solution, not just sit and moan about it. In conclusion, I believe we need to look at this situation promptly and efficiently realising that a short-term solution and a long-term solution will be needed and that all parties involved need to work together to bring about a suitable and working solution. Thank you for your time. You will have had electronically hopefully on your emails a list of conversations. This is from the neighbourly website that I'm on, so there's some helpful information there.
So that document as I understand has been uploaded to the hub, so thank you very much indeed for providing that. Have you also provided a copy of your presentation to us electronically as well?
Yes, I have.
You have? That's great, thank you very much indeed. All right, thanks for taking the time to come and present to us this morning, it's certainly valued. Thank you.
Thank you.
And secondly, I'd like to call to the table Michael Delatorre who also is going to speak to us about hospital car parking solutions. Is Michael here? Michael's not here. Okay, thank you very much. So then moving on, deputations by appointment, there are none. Presentation of petitions, there are none. Item 29, supplementary reports. So we've got a resolution here to include the supplementary reports, item 30 and item 31. I'm happy to move that resolution. Pauline Cotter will second. All those in favour, against, that's carried. Now moving to the council and committee minutes. So this is items five, six and seven which are council minutes, nine which is the Innovation and Sustainable Development Committee minutes. I'm happy to move all of those as a block. Phil Clearwater will second. All those in favour, against, that's carried. Okay, so then moving to item 10. So I'll bypass item eight, we'll deal with that when the mayor arrives. So moving to item 10, the draft submission of the Christchurch City Council on the Local Government Community Wellbeing Amendment Bill, item 10 on page 65. Are there any questions for staff on this? We'd invited any questions to be provided or any changes to be provided prior to the meeting and nothing was received. So we have a resolution to approve the draft submission which I'm happy to move. Do I have a second, Mike Davidson? Is there any debate on this?
Good morning, we'll declare the meeting open, so I'll call the meeting to order please. So welcome to our council meeting for the 24th of May. And I'd like to provide a particular welcome this morning to the very full public gallery that we've got. We have a number of students from New Zealand Broadcasting School here this morning, welcome, great to have you at our meeting. I'll call for apologies and I have an apology for lateness from Yanni Johansson and from the mayor and from Raf Manji, so they're all apologies for lateness. I've got apologies for early departure from Jamie Gough now, from David Easton, from Jimmy Chen. And depending on the timing of meeting, Dave East may be a partial absence rather than early departure. And Mike? Early departure from Mike Davidson, any advance on that one? Aaron?
I've got to be home by 11:30 tonight.
I'd like to think we can accommodate that.
Also got early departures from the mayor and councillor Manji.
And early departures from the mayor and councillor Manji, right, okay.
Are you Mr...
Okay, so I'm happy to move those apologies, do I have a second, Sarah Templeton? All those in favour? Against? That's carried. So then we move to declarations of interest. And obviously there are some conflicts of interest around the appointment of directors that comes in the public excluded part of the agenda, not aware of anything else that's been indicated. So now let's move to item three, public participation. We have two public forum items this morning. And I'd like to invite Natalie Wales to the table, who's going to speak to us about Christchurch Hospital car parking. So Natalie, thank you very much indeed for joining us. The public forum part of the meeting provides five minutes for you to address councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Natalie Wales and I'm a concerned citizen and I've taken time off work today because I'm so concerned about the current parking situation at the Christchurch Hospital. In particular, the safety of our nurses and health workers, particularly those on night shift or early morning shifts. Also the public accessing A and E, especially at night time, family members and friends visiting very sick loved ones in the ICU, those people without patient appointments who have injuries or severe illnesses. I've had to access A and E myself and I know firsthand how difficult finding a car park can be. Last year I was keeping my friend company at hospital as her husband underwent life-threatening major surgery and I had to leave her several times to go and shift my car so I wouldn't be clamped or towed. There were no close car parks available at that time either. I found the whole situation very stressful and the parking just added to that situation. I know that although the park and ride shuttle from Dean's F can be very helpful to some people, to most people it's quite far away from the hospital. And standing around in winter in the cold and wet is not great, along with the puddles and potholes in the car park itself, which are all issues which I'm sure you're all aware of that need addressing. I think we definitely need a car park building close to the hospital, especially to replace the one that was lost in the earthquakes. And we also, I think, should have some designated car parks, especially for the A and E department. I personally would like to see a working group put in place that involves representatives from members of the public, including myself if that's possible, health sector workers, the Christchurch City Council, the DHB, and also health patient advocates. I realise that this is a complex issue, that it affects a number of different organisations, and that of course funding is always an issue. But while things are being worked out, our people and staff at the hospital, I feel, are being put at risk. For me, I'm speaking on behalf of all those vulnerable and powerless people who know there is an issue but just don't have the time or energy to do anything about it. And for myself, I would like to be part of the solution, not just sit and moan about it. In conclusion, I believe we need to look at this situation promptly and efficiently, realising that a short-term solution and a long-term solution will be needed, and that all parties involved need to work together to bring about a suitable and working solution. Thank you for your time. You will have heard electronically, hopefully, on your emails, a list of conversations, this is from the neighbourly website that I'm on, so there's some helpful information there.
So that document, as I understand, has been uploaded to the hub, so thank you very much indeed for providing that. Have you also provided a copy of your presentation to us electronically as well?
Yes, I have.
You have?
Yes.
That's great, thank you very much indeed. All right, thanks for taking the time to come and present to us this morning, it's certainly valued, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And secondly, I'd like to call to the table Michael Delatorre, who also is going to speak to us about hospital car parking solutions. Is Michael here? Michael's not here, okay, thank you very much. So then moving on, deputations by appointment, there are none, presentation of petitions, there are none. Item 29, supplementary reports, so we've got a resolution here to include the supplementary reports, item 30 and item 31, I'm happy to move that resolution, Pauline Cotter will second, all those in favour? Against? That's carried. Now moving to the council and committee minutes, so this is items five, six and seven, which are council minutes, nine which is the Innovation and Sustainable Development Committee minutes. I'm happy to move all of those as a block, Phil Clearwater will second, all those in favour? Against? That's carried. Okay, so then moving to item 10, so I'll bypass item eight, we'll deal with that when the mayor arrives, so moving to item 10, the draft submission of the Christchurch City Council on the Local Government Community Wellbeing Amendment Bill, item 10 on page 65. Are there any questions for staff on this? We'd invited any questions to be provided or any changes to be provided prior to the meeting and nothing was received. So we have a resolution to approve the draft submission, which I'm happy to move, do I have a second, Mike Davidson? Is there any debate on this? Glenn and Phil, Glenn?
Thank you Mr Chair, very pleased to see this go through. At the time, the full wellbeings were removed from the LGA, I think the entire local government sector opposed it. They weren't heard and for me, this step today takes us a step forward in terms of central government listening to local. We've really come through quite, in my view, a shameful period over the treatment of local democracy. It's as if open season was declared on councils. I remember not only this instance, but one where a minister stacked up a whole lot of district plans behind him, having a go at all the councils over land provision and housing, and that did not go down well with local councils. I also note that we consider this paper today in the context of the news of elections coming back for ECAN, which is great to see. ECAN was can, as you know, back in 2010, and so it's been quite some time since we've had democracy for our regional councils. So I'm thrilled that this is going through. I have heard it mentioned in one quarter that we explore the possibility of some kind of covenant or treaty between central and local government so that a great deal more respect is actually built into the kind of framework between central and local. I've never seen so many attacks on local government as I have in the last nine years. So I'm thrilled that this is going through today, the full wellbeings and the DC dimension that goes with it as well, enabling us to charge for these facilities which we must. So I'm sure we'll all vote in favour.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, look, I certainly endorse what Glenn has said about supporting the staff, what the staff have written, I think it's a very good submission. I certainly recall, and most of you will, when the four wellbeings were taken out by a previous government, it was like a real assault on local government in terms of our wellbeing. And I'm very pleased that this new bill will restore those wellbeings. Yeah, and like an example too, of where I think local government have missed out and have had to pay a lot more was because the narrowing of development contributions and how they might be able to be collected by our councils. And so that in effect, I think, did great harm in terms of adding to the costs of every council throughout New Zealand. So I thank Ian and the staff for preparing this submission and am very happy to support it.
Mike?
Thank you, also Eka, the councillors across the room, I think it's really, really important these wellbeings get put back in. Obviously when they were taken out in 2012 by the then national government, it was aimed at trying to rein in the so-called overspending by local governments to try and actually fill a lot of the need within community. But I think what it really does show, I guess, is actually councils, the funding we get through rates and other mechanisms is just not enough to provide what we need to provide to actually put in quality infrastructure and also support communities appropriately. So this is actually a really good step, but it needs to go further in terms of actually the money we get, the funding we get, the revenue we get and how we therefore can distribute it properly across our communities and through our city to make sure that we meet all the needs.
I largely agree with the reinstatement of the wellbeings, I just wanted to draw councillors' attention to the changes to the development contributions and that is the reinstatement of a wider definition, which I think is well needed. We lost out as a city, particularly because of the earthquake and the change coming in just after the earthquake, meaning that we actually lost out on millions of dollars going towards providing from the growth to the city to the needs that we had to provide the infrastructure. So really welcome that, we just had a deputation the other day from the people in Waltham. And you know, to think that a brand new development with many, many houses goes in, intensive housing goes into that community, without any ability to, for that developer to pay and contribute to the local playground being upgraded seems to me absolutely unfair. And you know, that development contribution may have been going to other things out in Hallswall or the north of the city, but it doesn't go back into that local community that's bearing the impact of that development. So you know, I welcome the changes to the development contributions definition. And also the other thing that we're asking for in our submission, which is again long overdue, has been to have a much clearer infringement regime for councils, rather than this ridiculous thing when we try and enforce some of our bylaws, that we have to go through a very complicated, expensive prosecution like through the courts, rather than have the ability to give out infringements. And so, you know, I think the benefit of those is twofold, one, it would enable us to have bylaws that we could enforce a lot easier, a lot more cost-effective, but also it doesn't criminalise people for breaching our bylaws as well. So you know, I think there's a real advantage to having that infringement regime refined and I think it would be a lot, lot better for us in terms of how we run the city. So I welcome the staff submission, happy to support it today.
Very good, is there anyone else? Very good, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried, thank you. Shall we just do the draft submission on the privacy bill and then we'll go back to the one that was deferred while I was at meeting the head submission from different parts of the world? So does someone want to move that we approve the draft submission? Andrew, seconded. Mike, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Now, we'll go back to the...
Number eight.
No?
Number eight.
Number eight. Okay, now, staff, do you want to just make a quick overview of the why? Why are we doing this? And just a brief synopsis of the history and how we've got to this point in time? And then I know councillors have got some questions for you.
Okay, so this scope, this is in response to a resolution by the Greater Christchurch Partnership that's agreed on to take this process in this manner, is addressing the requirements of the national policy statement that requires us to develop a future development strategy.
And that's because we are one of the...
One of the partners of the Greater Christchurch Partnership and one of the high-growth areas.
The high-growth areas, so this is a legal requirement under...
It is, indeed.
Yeah, thank you.
In terms of the history, as you'll be familiar, we've had a future development strategy, it's called the Urban Development Strategy. In 2016, there was an update provided to that strategy to sort of bring it into today's environment, but what that didn't do is look at some of the land use aspects, and so it was recognised we needed to do that, and it's now being done in conjunction with the obligation that we have to do it coming out of the national policy statement.
There's also updated population projections, that happens every few years, and so this will also be a direct response to those. And some, suppose, new, more detailed aspects that we have to cover through addressing any shortfalls of development capacity is looking not just at location, which the UDS and our district plans tend to look at, but also looking at matters such as typologies and price points, so meeting the demand for particular price points and particular typologies, which we haven't in the past had to go down to that detail. So that's quite important when you consider the huge demand for affordable housing into the future.
Right, okay, so questions, Vicky?
So given the need to address the demand for affordable housing and the huge increase that there will be in the demand for social housing, given the lack of ownership, given the statistics which show that ownership of housing has dropped dramatically, and there is a huge wave of people who will come to age 65 and not own a house and who will need social housing, can this also address, given that it's mostly about Sowun and Wimac since our district scheme is done, can it also address the need for the social infrastructure in Sowun and Wimac so that those demands don't all fall on just the city as they currently do?
So it's not about Sowun and Wimac, it's about the Greater Christchurch area, the future development strategy. So to be clear, it does cover Christchurch City and it does cover the required demand for more affordable housing, including social housing, so that's a component of it. And yes, it does include the demand that can be met and how Sowun and Wimac can contribute to that as well, meeting that demand, so it's across...
So it will cover...
Yes, yes it will, it must cover.
Beyond the city?
Yes.
Yes, beyond, so it's the Greater Christchurch Partnership area.
I think what, is there some confusion that the proposed change to the regional policy statement, almost you might consider it as an interim change to the, that's being purported to just look at the Sowun and Wimac medium-term shortfall, that's what that is about, so there is a proposal to consider or to undertake a section 32 analysis to look at a proposed change to the Canterbury Regional Policy Statement, but that's actually a separate matter than what this matter is about.
Yes, I've tried to explain in a very short paragraph that there are two tracks and it's a separate process, and actually we've probably got a greater issue that we need to address in terms of the regional policy statement change and ensuring that it is focused on the length of term that it's intended to be focused on and not ending up in the long term too early, yeah.
Just to be very clear, at the moment, the demand for social infrastructure falls on the city, Sowun and Wimac do not meet any of the demand, or a minor, tiny amount of the demand. So what I just want to be very clear on is that you've talked about affordable housing, which is great for those who can afford to buy a house, but for those who can't, that they will have the ability to remain in their community when they need social housing and that it will be provided, and that if we have the capacity in this to push for that, that it is included specifically. So just to be very clear.
Yes, so as part of, that's another one of the outcomes we, the city would be expecting that Sowun and Wimac through their proposed change to the Canterbury Regional Policy Statement, even looking at the medium term, that they provide for the range of housing typologies such that would provide for more affordable housing. So that comes down to densities.
Affordable in both rental and...
Social housing?
Now, the Canterbury Regional Policy Statement is not the mechanism to, it depends how far you expect the Canterbury Regional Policy Statement to go in terms of dealing directly to social housing, and it's not the method to do that.
It's a land use document.
It is a land use...
So land use and, yeah, I mean, it's more about density than it is about, you know, who owns the housing, whether it's social housing or whether it's affordable.
So social housing is a mechanism to address, as is various forms of housing, this is talking about typologies and understanding those typologies.
Sorry to be persistent, but this is a future development strategy. We know the issue, we know that all of the Sowun and Wimac issues come into the city at the moment, what I'm trying to ensure is that affordable for many people looking forward will be social housing, sorry to say, that is the reality. So does it actually and can it specifically include that? So I'm sorry to persist with it, but...
Yes, so the future development strategy is a local, it's developed under the Local Government Act, but it's a direct response to the national policy statement for urban development capacity. Within that, it is up to the Greater Christchurch Partnership how far it wishes to go into providing maybe actions or implementation as part of that that would address or look to begin to address the matter of provision.
The short answer is yes.
So can we, do we need to add to the recommendations such that when it goes back to the committee, Greater Christchurch Partnership, that it specifically addresses...
That would be part of the feedback that would go into the development of the draft.
Yeah, so can we just have a, can we have a noting recommendation, noting, another noting, which says that note that the city would have an expectation that social housing will be a component of all three...
Of the solutions.
Of the three, of the two districts as well as the city?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Component of the two districts, what, the two districts...
Sowun and Wimac.
Yeah, I know, but the two districts...
The Greater Christchurch area.
Yeah.
The Greater Christchurch area, right.
Yes, I know, but we provide for the Greater Christchurch area, there are two districts that...
That border Christchurch City.
Yeah.
Great Christchurch District.
The city will have an expectation that will be a component of the two districts as well as Christchurch City. Okay, Yanni?
Thank you. So when we previously discussed this, I thought we agreed to approach the minister or the ministers from the previous government when this came in around why we were being asked to do it, given that we'd done a land use recovery plan and we'd done a district plan review and we'd done a UDS refresh slash update.
We did, we did, we actually, the Greater Christchurch Partnership met with the minister and specifically requested that we not meet these timeframes, but I have to say that there is no time left not to proceed.
So just so I'm clear, so that was the previous government or the new government?
No, current one.
So the current government still wants us to do this?
There's been no change to the timelines from the current government.
And have we got a process to actually logically go back to them and say, we're concerned, we've just had all this work done in this area and we're just having to duplicate?
Well, it's not a duplication because it is actually, I mean, as I say, there's a link to the other stream of work, but it is a requirement to do it, we're in the high growth category and the high growth category is significantly driven off Wimac, Reryan Sowun, not Christchurch.
And you're paying for most of us?
No, 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 we're contributing staff.
So there's two important components here. One is that the land use recovery plan and the changes to the regional policy statement only dealt with growth to 2028, we have to deal with growth to 2048. Also, to do any integrated planning with transport, we have to look at the land use or the development capacity requirements to 2048 to support any joint position on land use and transport.
And a lot of that work's already been done through the UDS?
Yeah, and I think government have recognised that if the work's been done, then the job becomes that much smaller, so we cut our cloth accordingly, but what we do is we ensure that the strategy brings through that wealth of work that's been done to show we don't need to do too much more, so...
So I'm just trying to understand like the possible outcome of this, doing it through Greater Christchurch Partnership, does it have to be done through the Greater Christchurch Partnership or could we just do this as a city council?
It absolutely has to be at a Greater Christchurch level because it has regional significance, the impact of growth in Sowun and Wimac and providing for just what you mentioned before about the huge challenge of affordable housing, and that's a Greater Christchurch issue to tackle.
I'm just trying to understand if that's a legal requirement or whether it's...
No.
Right, so we could choose to do it as a city?
We can, but it strongly recommends where, especially when we've got an established UDS which is looking at, addresses the Greater Christchurch area, but it strongly advises that councils where there are particularly crossover boundary issues that they work together to address the urban growth issues for that area.
So that's in the MP's...
But can I just say, this is the scoping paper, this is not the draft that's going out for public consultation, you know, and, you know, it was made very clear, you know, and I'll acknowledge Sarah Templeton as the, one of the representatives on the Greater Christchurch Partnership, absolutely crystal clear that it was to come back to us. So the original staff recommendation that went to the Urban, Greater Christchurch Partnership was that this council delegate the decision-making to the Greater Christchurch Partnership. We've said no and a case was... We've said no and a case was made and that was accepted. And so the draft will come back.
Right.
And what I'm giving an undertaking to today is that we will workshop the draft in detail before it comes back to council for a decision. This is the scoping paper.
I understand that, but this is the start of this process and I believe once we agree to this and ratify it, then it's very hard to change some key elements of it. Now, for some of us who have had history with the UDS and what we saw was the community wanted us not to go and spread out into the greenfields. That was overwhelming from the public submissions, but because of the decision making process on it, it basically didn't, that wasn't the outcome of it. What the outcome was, was urban sprawl at, at the expense of more dense population in the, in the central city and in the inner city. And what we had as a result is huge motorways being built. And what we've seen since the UDS has come in, a lack of focus on affordable and social housing. There were actions around that in the, in the UDS and they were never really given much effect to. It was all about providing infrastructure to the, to urban, to support urban sprawl, which led to the motorways being built. And so what I'm concerned about is the decision making around this. The question is really if, are we confident that the decision making around this is going to give, lead to the best outcomes for the city as opposed to our neighbouring territorial authorities who seem to have everything to gain from this and we seem to have the most to lose?
Can I just say that it's, there's a parallel process that, that we need to be briefed on and we need to work through a number of those issues. This is not the form, this is not the place for that. But, you know, I mean, I, I can't persuade you around the council table and I think we just need to move on and accept that.
There's no time for a workshop on this before we ratify it today?
It's the scoping, I promise that there will be a workshop before we consider the draft.
And the second question was around the housing targets that are mentioned in this report. Have they been set or when do they get set and how do we feed into that?
No, they haven't been set. They, what's been identified is three options for, for those minimum targets and they again have to come back to council.
So is there a kind of, in the process overview that we've got, we've got, it says sequential and parallel work components. Have we got a kind of understanding of the process for agreeing certain things?
Sorry, how do you mean?
Well, like things like the minimum housing targets, for example, like it's, it's just not clear from, from me, from reading this around how we actually make decisions around things like the minimum housing targets? Whether that's the hearings panel that gets to do it?
No, so it'll be part of the workshop and part of the process and it's part of the technical work that the staff are doing.
Sorry, I'm trying to understand who makes the decisions.
Well.
Finally, they come back to the.
Ultimately comes back here.
So, so the future development strategy has within it, will have within it the minimum targets. It's, to be fair, it's not actually clear, which goes, the minimum targets have to be put into the Canterbury Regional Policy Statement by December this year. Ideally, the future development strategy gets signed off and as part of that, the minimum targets are set within it. And then, so that's decided by each authority. And then it gets put into the regional policy statement.
Glenn?
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Great to see the drill down to price points and typology. And I'm just wondering with what sits behind this discussion is a, a principle which we pick up in, in Christchurch's, sorry, Christchurch City's own housing policy, that being inclusionary zoning. So obviously, you know, explicitly affordable housing development is provided for, which social housing itself is a subset. So what would be, if this is the scoping and it's about land use, is this the place to begin that conversation? Or is that further on with the, the actual workshopping and draft?
Yes, I think we need to do a workshop bringing options forward to, about how, also what document is best to tackle what, what aspect of it. Some of it might be in the, certainly the future development strategy, might be signalling further work to be required. It can't solve everything, but it certainly can set out maybe a programme of work or some initiatives by which to solve the problem or look towards solving the problem. And so I think that's the most appropriate way to actually bring that to you, isn't it? What's been done to date, what more needs to be done and what other options are there to tackle the issue? Because it's quite a complex issue.
Yeah, if we had a discussion over, e.g., twenty-five percent would be, you know, affordable in, in our land use that, yeah, okay, great. Do we need to note that today, Mayor, or as well, do you think?
Sorry, what was that?
Just noting inclusionary zoning as a part of that conversation over social housing.
I think that's all part of the conversation.
I think it's part of the same.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Dion?
Thank you. In the, in the document, there's a little part around the, the integration of other processes and it's central city and Avon, well, the Avon River Corridor. Quite interesting to note that actually it says that the regeneration plan is likely to be released for consultation in August, which is nice to know, I suppose, that was, that's nice to find out in these reports. But the thing I'm worried about is, does this type of thing over or supersede the work that's actually already going to be done? So let's say this two years of work that this been going on for the regeneration strategy and they say, no, we don't want any buildings to be built in there. And then all of a sudden you get this thing going over top. And so actually, we think we need some growth in these areas and we're going to sort of test the boundaries or something.
So just to clarification, the, there's a public exhibition that begins this Saturday on Otakaro Avon River Corridor. Within that, there is very, at the extent of the work that's been undertaken, part of that is saying the fact that there's very limited opportunity for residential development. So really the outcome of that work is to say that whilst we can expect, you know, there's opportunities to do some innovative new housing, it won't be of the scale that would probably put any, drop in the bucket of what to meet this demand that actually is required.
So this is just saying we're not blind to those other things?
Yeah, but what I'm saying here is that we're doing, you know, there's an agency out there doing this, this work over here in the regeneration strategy. This is going to come in over top. And if, and if the people who are doing this don't agree with that strategy, they can actually say something over top and actually sort of, you know, start development.
I personally worked with the, the team on the, on the Otakaro Avon River. So I'm fully aware of what opportunities were available in that land. And that has, that's actually part, we, we actually work quite closely, it's not this one. I suppose the future development strategy is looking for opportunities of where to house people. That's, that's one of the fundamental, you know, outcomes that seek to do. So, and what it looks to is to say, well, in that corridor, is there any opportunity? And the outcome of that work that's been undertaken is no, that's quite limited, but it may present some, as I said, some innovative ideas for maybe a more affordable housing. But it's not going to be at the scale, when you look at the numbers, again, it will come back to a workshop on this. But when you look at the numbers that we have to try and provide for, it's quite significant. So, and I mean, that's, that's the challenge ahead that the future development strategy has to tackle.
Pauline?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. My question's around transport and it's also about integration. So that we know that, that we are, and it's stated here that the strategic transport direction set out in these documents will provide an important contribution to the FDS statement. However, we know that in the GPS, transport has been prioritised over land use. In other words, land use should occur around existing transport routes and for efficiencies and functionality. So is that, I mean, it's a chicken and egg and I don't particularly think that wording actually supports the priority of transport.
Yes, I mean, if the, the, part of the, if you go back to the UDS strategic directions, that's, that's quite clearly stated that transport and land use have to be integrated. That's actually one of, it's part of the vision, it's part of strategic goals, it's part of everybody's strategic priorities in Selwyn, Wimack and, and the city.
So. It's gone beyond that.
It has.
Transport is being aligned as, as the first and then the land use is around the existing routes.
So yes, the same team that is working on the GPS is the same team that's working on this work. And so yes, we're having those very conversations within the team, within the team structures that are developing this. Which one drives which and there certainly has, looking as part of, again, when I come back to what is the, one of the sole outcomes of this is where do we house people? Where do we house people in the best location to support those public transport corridors and so forth? So that, that is actually one of the key principles of developing the FDS.
It's very, it's very fundamental.
Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you, just two quick things. Firstly, at the, the last Greater Christchurch Partnership meeting, we asked again about the feasibility tests in the timeframes and whether we had formally written to get those potentially changed. So the feasibility tests on how feasible, the assessments, see how feasible the development is and the timeframes, have we done that yet?
We've delayed writing to the minister because we've had some fruitful discussions with officials. Up till now, we hadn't. So we wanted the letter to be crafted in a way that was positive and had solutions rather than problems.
Great.
So we can report those separately in terms of what those positive discussions have led to probably at the next committee meeting.
Great.
But we think that there's now a much better understanding between government and local government about what's the pragmatic way of dealing with these issues that we've got to deal with.
Yeah, and the other one, just quickly, would it be fair to say, they're tagging with a question at the beginning, would it be fair to say that the, the fact that all of the councils need to ratify this at the very end of the process means that both Selwyn and Wimack Rerrie need to also make sure that they do things in a way that will get our sign off?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Yep. Aaron?
Yeah, so mine's just, it's just a double-barreled question. In most of our reports, we often have the financial implication, so we know how much it's costing us. Doesn't really say in here. And so my question's around what is the cost of all of this and then what's the measurable outcomes at the end?
So predominantly the costs are in staff time, so we have.
Well, the staff and consultants.
Yep.
And who picks up all the bill for the consultants? Because I noticed in the, the breakdown, our FTEs are three point five, but others are just putting in point three, with the exception of EK, which is a one.
So because this project's being dealt with collaboratively, the budget that councils contribute to the partnership itself and the running of the partnership will pay for the, the costs associated with this project. It's primarily to write a document. There has been some evidence-based work that's occurred already, but the, what you've got in front of you is, is minimal cost. Its implications are huge, but then they're picked up through district plans and LTPs and that's where you're making the actual decisions on those costings.
Okay, Becky?
Oh. Sorry, just one more question, it's not on housing, but it is on the fact that this goes through till twenty forty-eight, by which time New Zealand and Christchurch City have to be just about carbon neutral. So how do, and if you look at the latest Productivity Commission report, there is a massive impact on land use. How does climate change and the effects of that, apart from coastal hazards, factor into this?
I mean, it's going, it's one of the issues that's raised and I suppose because this is fundamentally a land use and transport directed document, that it's, whilst again it may refer to future programmes of work or initiatives, being that its focus is on land use and transport, that would be where we'd have to see some initiatives that are going towards carbon neutrality.
So given that transport is the key.
Yes.
And land use is, you know, fifty cent based, but often major transport is, is the other key one. Can we make sure that within the framework of the way we measure the outcomes that we want, that climate change is effective in there?
Again, it's one of the strategic goals, priorities, I can't remember the directions of the UDS currently. And the, you know, we expect that that's going to be carried through and therefore it will have to show an action plan towards.
Will we actually make it explicit?
This is, this is the framework, so can we add a note that, that there is an expectation that the current strategic framework of the UDS, including its focus on climate change, is, is carried through into the future development strategy? Is that okay? Tim?
Thank you. Just on the, on the social housing aspect, with regards to Selwyn and Wimack, they're going through their LTP as we are. Do we know what their component in there with regards to social housing is? Because if this is a future document and we are a partnership, you know, we take pride in our social housing, we have issues. And at the moment, all I can say is if they have none, and they have none in their LTP, that's a ten-year document with, with implications further on. So do we know if they, or can we look at that to see if, how long they're going to be in this or how much they're going to put in?
We'll have to ask them and again, if being that will be a focus of, or an expectation now that we address that as part of the FDS, then we can, we'll be asking that of them.
I, I have raised the, this issue with the minister about the lack of connection between the timeframes. So we do an LD, LTP.
Yep.
And then we go into a regional transport plan and go into a public transport plan after the LTP. And this process is another one after the LTP. So I think that we wouldn't have an expectation that, that outcomes in relation to this process and the, that they're going through a district plan review, both of them as well at the moment. So that will carry on for quite some time.
But it would be disappointing to see our partners in this not having any vision over social housing, because our rate.
But it hasn't been raised with them.
But they, but to have, but if they have none.
Yes, but it hasn't been raised with them yet. What I'm saying is, is that we can't look to their LTP. What we can do is we can say that Christchurch City has an expectation that social housing will be a component of the two districts as well as Christchurch City. We can talk that through with them.
And we can look at their, their LTP proposal to see, and if there is nothing in there with regards to social housing, we could ask them.
The timing's, the timing's the wrong way. You know, that's what I keep saying, they're doing their LTP now.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm saying if there is no forward vision of them doing and responsible for social housing, then we can ask them what their vision was, so we have a better understanding of what our partners are expecting in the future, which is definitely this document.
That's what we want to do.
Yeah, but at the moment, it seems to have been fallen off the wagon, so to speak.
But it hasn't been raised with them, that's what I'm saying, it's chicken and egg.
Yes, it's something so important and we're saying it's so important.
Raise that through this process.
Yeah. Yanni?
I'm just, obviously the housing issues come up quite a lot. My understanding is that there's supposed to be a Greater Christchurch housing policy. Is that in place or will that be in place to inform this target, these targets?
So it is a priority action in the update. It hasn't been progressed as yet, we've kind of been focused on some of this immediate work that's got statutory deadlines. But it's still a desire as expressed in that twenty sixteen update. And I think the city council's housing policy forms a good sort of platform to, to take that forward.
But picking up on the point, like, you know, obviously Housing, New Zealand, MB have got some interest in housing provision now as well. We've got an action to do something that could run a Greater Christchurch housing policy that hasn't been done and now being asked to look at targets without doing that policy. Could it be done as part of this so that we had that kind of common understanding across government and across the region? As we were supposed to have done in the Greater Christchurch update last, from last time?
As Sarah said, given that this has got a land use transport focus, I think there'll be elements that we can pick up in, in that. But then there'll be other elements that are in the housing policy at a Christchurch level that won't sit easily in, in the document we're, we're in front of us, but could be signalled as actions and programmes of work to take forward. It's kind of, where is it best placed to progress these things?
I think that falls out of this document.
You've heard the concerns, like for some of us, you know, going back to the start of the UDS, social and affordable housing, always it seems to be the last cap off the rank, work never seems to progress on it.
Two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, that's when the UDS was developed. We had an earthquake since then. There have been changes made to it through the land use recovery plan and it had to be adapted as a result of those changes that were made. Not all of those changes were acceptable to the council, but they were changes that were made under a framework that we had nothing to do with.
And you will find.
We have a statutory deadline to meet with this, this is the scoping document. Can we please leave these bigger questions to when we actually address the draft that's going to go out for public consultation, if it ever does? Pauline?
It can, it's PR, what's that?
Set my pattern review.
Thank you.
Sorry, moved, moved by Sarah, seconded by Phil. Is there any discussion? I'll pop the mic. I'll put the... Okay, we're going to have to move on to another item on the agenda, because we've got such a short timeframe for the, if we're going to all debate it again after questions, then can we, I know that I've moved, we've moved and seconded it, but can we defer this to another item?
Please.
Another meeting?
Yeah. No, another, I just want to deal with the Antarctic Strategy and then come back to it, okay?
Just in terms of the order, Leanne, because clearly we're going to have a workshop on this, it may, I don't feel any compelled to debate it today.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, people are entitled to debate it, so I'm sorry, team, can you hang around? And can I invite the team together forward for the Antarctic Strategy paper, and we'll move on to that? I just know that there's a constraint in terms of some time. Right. Good afternoon. Now, this has been through the Innovation and Sustainable Development Committee, so I'll invite the Chair of the Committee to introduce the report.
So this has gone through a workshop and then to the Committee, and this is the result of what's, and the whole thing was redrafted, and I have to say, it's been redrafted, I think extremely well, by Christchurch NZ, and it's, what we've now arrived at is something that captures not just the logistics of the Antarctic Strategy in terms of the economic impact that Antarctica has on Christchurch, but tried to capture some of the, sort of the magic of the history of Antarctic exploration in terms of the impact that it has on Christchurch people. And if you look through everything in Christchurch, there are so many aspects of Antarctica that are here, and it's almost in our D N A. I mean, it's one of the, was originally part of Kondwana Land, of course, it's got, we've made sure that we've covered the environmental, the sustainability, but also all of the practical issues of being a gateway city, and some of the excitement that goes with that, and tried to share some of that excitement with the people of Christchurch. So this is a continent, of course, that's got no government, which is pretty exciting in itself, it's had no wars, it's, it's an amazing place, if you've ever been there, the feeling as you fly back into Christchurch of the explosion of colour, having looked at white for a week, is totally amazing and just incredible. But Christchurch is one of the very few places where people can actually get there, so the University of Canterbury, for example, who do those amazing courses that enable people to go to Antarctica, just incredible. And so what has been tried to be put together, and I think quite very well here, is the succinct sort of development of all of the aspects of Antarctica and how it feeds into the economy, the environment, the sustainability, the excitement, the magic, and the possibility that exists here. So that's what Jo Enner and her team have tried to do, I think they've done a very good job, and it's been through the Committee, and I think we've arrived at something that's cool.
So has anyone got, has anyone got any questions for us? Yep? Of Christchurch NZ? No, 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 it would be a shame. So you'd like to second it? So it's been moved and seconded, moved by Vicky, seconded by Tim, Yanni?
Two questions, and I did put these through before. Just wondering what happens in years two and three, and if there's any reporting back dates for any of the actions that are in here to council, so I'm not quite clear how it reports back on a regular basis. And just for the sake of time, I'll just add the second question, which is related, is are we able to get the International Relations Working Party having like a six-monthly update or reporting, so that, you know, I endorse what's in here, but I just want to understand how at a governance level as councillors, we see...
Why the international working relationships?
If I can assist, the terms of reference for Vicky's committee contain the Antarctic, so reporting back, I imagine, would be via that committee again, unless you, council, wish to change that?
Yeah, or maybe it could be jointly done, but yeah. And then the second thing was, so in terms of like individual plans that get developed, will they come back to council, or they'll just sit with Christchurch NZ?
So they'd only come back to council if they had to, they'd obviously be shared with stakeholders, which obviously includes the council generally, but individual implementation plans would only come up to the full council if it required that amount of delegation or decision.
We do have the intention to incorporate aspects of the strategy into our statement of intent, depending on the decision today.
Yeah, and the first question was the years two and three? If you go to your action plan, kind of, it's great, it's got year one outcomes, and it skips to year four?
Yeah, we've provided a lot of detail on year one, a lot of that detail is about developing plans into the future. We wanted to reflect a clear indication of momentum into that 10-year horizon, but those plans of year one, for example, looking at the opportunities around the visitor attraction, enhancing visitor experience, will be, will inform a detailed plan for years two and three.
And then term would be reflected back into the annual statement of intent.
Very good, Jimmy?
Thank you, Mayor, I have two questions. First one regarding to the page 13, the paragraph 6.8. I just want to know the, who are those the key strategy partners and the stakeholders, except those the lead agencies? Particularly, I reviewed the page, the 33, Sula are priority one to priority four, they have Christchurch NZ, C I A L, Littleton Pool, Uni, and some other agency also should be getting involved in this Antarctic Strategy, that's my first question.
So you're asking, Jimmy, I think, around who attended, especially the paragraph 6.8 refers to the workshop that was run by Christchurch NZ with 22 participants in, so you'd like to know who those agencies were?
Yes.
Yeah, so they have broad support and they're captured in the, in the strategy. So in the back page of the strategy document itself, refers to the stakeholders engaged with during the process. If you'd like, we could pick out of that list now, there are numerous stakeholders, organisations and individuals at that workshop.
Okay.
They're on page 40 and 41 of the...
Forty, forty-one, I'd like to double check. Okay. Second question, I follow the councillor Yanni Johansson question, because this Antarctica kind of the region should be the part of the Christchurch international relations connection. And also, a moment in council, we did have the international relations working group, we have the councillors, we have eight key strategic partnerships representatives, so we provide a strategic oversight and advice. So my question is why this Antarctic Strategy, not presented to this working group, to give the strategic advice, this is my question.
So the terms of reference for the Innovation and Sustainable Development Committee include the Antarctic-related work, so that's why it came through that Committee. I imagine going forward, knowing that we're looking to come up with a new international relations strategy in association with your working group and up to council, that anything Antarctic-related would be captured within that and obviously worked with Christchurch NZ and Vicky's Committee.
Can I just suggest, Jo, are you okay if we have a thing that suggests that you report back every six months to the Committee, and we invite the International Relations Committee to that?
It's a working group, it's...
The members of?
We have the council, we have eight key stakeholders.
Yeah, no, no problem.
I think that'd be really useful dialogue, just so I fully understand, the purpose of the workshop would be to review levels of service, or to simply have an informal dialogue?
Just an informal dialogue, an informal dialogue, yeah, yeah. So we could add that, or we'll just do that?
Okay, thank you. I would like to, according to your comments, a moment in Christchurch City Council, we did have existing international relations policy, but if we review this policy or its type is improved, but that's for the near future, we are proceeding on, but existing the international relation, the policy still going on, still to be functioning, that's my view.
Agreed, yeah. Sarah?
Just quickly, because the, the sort of, a lot of the civic international function will still sit within the city council because of, you know, the status and operationally how that works, when you look at 5.19 with the budget, do you need the entire, because some of that function is still sitting within council, does all of the office budget have to go to Christchurch NZ, or could some of that stay with the council for those functions?
So perhaps firstly, we're to write something that I said at the Committee, so the, generally, the strategy has been drafted with the view that the lead agency would be Christchurch NZ to capture all of the synergies. The budget that we referred to in paragraph 5.19 is the Antarctic Office-related budget, which is, is not, every budget would like to be bigger. So yes, it is absolutely intention that Civic International Relations Team in particular, but all of council work with Christchurch NZ in implementing this, so the synergies of our other operations, and particularly Christchurch NZ, would be used to their max, and the Civic International Relations Team and their association with the Mayor in particular is a key part of that collaboration. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, although that was going to cost us still the staff time and money and those kind of things.
They're involved anyway, so when...
Is that not currently coming out of that budget, that's just coming out of normal council operations?
So the involvement of, because quite often events are co-hosted or involve a range of things, so it's part Antarctic, part other, so therefore the costs are borne between the two, so we bear those both in the Antarctic Office, if you like, and in the Civic International Relations, depending on the event. There are many visits which include multiple things.
I just wonder whether it would be useful to actually include a reference to this in the second resolution, so approve the responsibility for the Antarctic Office being transferred to Christchurch NZ, together with accompanying funding effective as at 1 July 2018, noting, and this is taking it from the paper, that, that working closely with the council, particularly the Mayor's Office and the Civic International Relations Team, will be an important part of the ongoing relationship.
That would absolutely match the discussion at the Committee, which is why there was an adapted resolution one there, but that captures it in more detail.
Yeah.
And I did cover this at the Committee as well, but we're in a much more public forum here, that last time we passed a strategy that went to Christchurch NZ, it was the event strategy, and that sort of was set as it was, and then within a couple of months, you know, you came back and said, well, this is all good, but if you want us to do it properly, we need more money, is that going to happen here?
So we've developed this strategy with clear intention that it will fit within the fiscal envelope, developed with, in the L T P.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to have a reporting format included in the resolution? Because, I mean, often, reporting doesn't necessarily occur unless there's a trigger for it, so I just wonder if we, if we have request Christchurch NZ to report on a six monthly basis...
We're really comfortable with that, I think it would be useful dialogue.
To the Innovation and Sustainability Committee, who will invite the International Relations Working Group to be part of that workshop? Is everyone happy?
Yeah.
Okay, now it's been moved by councillor Buck, seconded by councillor Scandrit, is there any debate? I will put the motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. It is carried unanimously, thank you, well done, good work. Right, now we'll turn back to something that doesn't quite go so smoothly, and we are up to the debate now. Who wants to debate this? It was Glenn, Yanni, and Dion. You don't need to come back to the table if you don't want to, because we're up to the debate. The odd staff has tried to participate from time to time, but I assure you, you won't want to, and Phil. All right, Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor, just a few notes here, just over this, obviously looking forward to the draft, but just a wee story, when the Preston's development was included, it had the two been outside the red line, so it was included after the quakes, after, you know, considerable housing unit loss, it was touted in many quarters as being affordable, and obviously prices in there will vary. Friends of ours paid 750 all up for land and housing, so tell me how that's affordable. In my view, we need intervention by way of tools, so if this is about land use, while I do support obviously the note over social housing, I think we need a broader tool, which would, or could be inclusionary zoning, which takes in social housing, obviously it takes in affordable housing, social housing is a subset of that. We need to do this, we know from one of the advisers at least, to the Housing Minister, Shemmy Beala Cube, that New Zealand flatlined with its social housing building in 1991, and it flatlined in house construction total, which would have resulted in a squeeze in terms of supply thereby forcing prices up over time. So we need to look ahead, as Vicky has said, we have a big baby boomer bubble coming through, and we're going to be caught out. If we want Christchurch in Canterbury to be an attractive place to live, work and play, sometimes you have to do the boring stuff, like housing, and we need to ensure that housing will be affordable for people to come here and settle. So I really hope that when we do get that draft, we get a really good go, this is a real opportunity to make some change, but we can't just talk about social housing or affordable, we actually have to have a tool, otherwise you're just hoping, and it's an arbitrary thing. Unless you impose some kind of a tool, in my view, it's not going to happen. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity when it comes our way.
Thank you, Yanni?
Just wanted to speak in support of councillor Livingston, he may not be aware that in 2007, the Greater Christchurch Urban Development Strategy had its top 20 priority actions. Action number 15, carry out a study of housing affordability options around inclusive zoning, increasing the stock of social housing, partnerships with developers, and monitoring the supply and demand of affordable housing at local and regional levels. So this stuff is not new, this has been around for a number of years now, but what we seem to keep doing is using this process to try and deal with bigger issues around housing, which seems to be just the idea that we just free up more land, more of our versatile soils, more of our greenfields for urban sprawl, while at the same time, not getting the development around policies in place to actually get social housing being spread equally and equitably across our region. So what we're seeing is a whole desire to free up land for, as my councillor colleague has said, for quite expensive housing choices for some, but not for many, and probably, we don't know, but I would guess that we've enabled fewer people to own more houses, rather than enabling more people to own a house. So we've basically continued to, I think, through these strategies, enable the rise of inequality and inequity in our society, because it always seems that these business principles of freeing up more land for development is good, and what we see is that the social cost of that is borne by those who can least afford it. So I'm really concerned about this process. I personally think a reflection on previous urban development strategy has been that it didn't respond to what the community wanted because of the governance arrangements. The decision that we're being asked to make today continues to enshrine those governance arrangements into a group that I doesn't, I don't think gives us a good outcome for our city. What it leads to is hundreds of millions of dollars being spent on motorways, connecting, you know, Selwyn and Waimak to our city, enabling more development to happen on our very precious soils, where actually we've got huge issues in terms of the loss of those versatile soils, and huge issues in terms of traffic coming into our central city, like Cranford Street, where we're spending millions and millions of dollars, completely contrary to what's happening in our inner city. So I can't support this, I would have really preferred to have a workshop on it. I don't believe that this governance structure gets the best outcome for everyone, and as such, I think it's ludicrous that we're spending time and resource on a document that seems to have more benefit for Selwyn and Waimak than ourselves.
Dion?
I just wanted to speak briefly on why I won't be voting for...
I just wanted to speak briefly on why I won't be voting to support this as well. Mainly it's around, I just do not think that this is actually necessary for us to do right now. I think we've just done the district plan that we're locked into at the moment. There's a whole lot of other issues that we need to deal with in the city. And I just do not see from reading it that this is a priority for the city council at the moment, and that's just why I won't be voting for it.
Phil?
Councillors, I will be supporting it. I think as we know, that under our current law, in fact, as a council, we're required to work collaboratively with the other territory authorities. And we should, and do the future development strategy. It's part of what we have to do. And I think we've got an opportunity to do it well. This is really just asking for the initial scoping paper to be done, around the extent of land in Christchurch which will be required for housing. And like, as we know, besides it coming back to our council for ratification, the scoping paper, the whole thing will go out for consultation. So we have, it is actually surrounded by a democratic process, which is quite different to some of the recent legislation we had, for example, around the Loop, where as councils, all of us were required to do the land use planning the way it developed. And I can understand the concerns around urban sprawl and what has happened. And the taking up of green space as against the intensification of our Greater Christchurch, which in fact, the urban development strategy was designed to do. But I think we need to really work with this process. And as Pauline has indicated, it clearly needs to fit alongside the transport plan for Greater Christchurch as well. And that, we have to make sure that in fact, that doesn't remain a sticking point. We know, for example, that most of the people who are employed in Greater Christchurch come in to Christchurch City for their employment. We have to make sure that in fact, that transport planning works well alongside where our future housing will be.
Sarah?
Thank you. It's just really good to remember with this. It is only a scoping paper. It is designed in a way where we got changes to make sure that the draft comes back to council again before it goes out for consultation. We've been through the UDS process. We know that people understand that we can't have unlimited growth onto our versatile soils. My feeling is that this will come back simply affirming the position that we already have. And our partner councils in Selwyn and Waimakareli do understand the big picture, although they have their own local challenges. And they are aware that they will need our buy-in to get through any changes that they want. It will come back. We will workshop it. It is a legislated requirement. We have to do it. We need some changes to the feasibility test, because I think it's got about a 20% development profit sort of thing in there at the moment, which a lot of developers are now not looking at that, and different ways of doing developments. Organizations like Ohi and things aren't taken into account through this process at all. We legally need to do this. We need to make the best of it. And so let's just get on with it.
A breath?
Just a very quick statement. Look, I mean, this is just another strategy planning document. The big problem this city has, as many cities in New Zealand also have, is how to build houses. That is the problem, and I think that's what people should be focusing their energy on.
Right. Thank you. I'll put the motion then. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. So who opposed? Yanni, Aaron and Dion. Thank you. Right, now we move on to the Metropolitan Discretionary Response Fund. Is that right?
Yes.
And we have the three grants there. Now, did this go to? No, it didn't go to a committee. So would someone like to move the grants? Tim, seconded by Glenn? Right. Are there any questions?
I just have one question. I'm pretty satisfied. We don't have to repay. I was just concerned with the Christchurch Emerging Theatre Trust. We're paying rent and staff costs. And I just wanted clarity, because I know we'd previously funded the group that they're commissioning to do the work. I think I read that in the report. We'd already funded through another fund. So can you just help me understand the relationship?
Yes, so we funded the Emerging Theatre Trust in 2016 to help establish them in the Arts Centre. So that was a contribution towards the Fit Art, initial contribution to rent and wages. And that was via the Creative Industries Support Fund in the 16th, 17th financial year.
But that's not our fund we just administer it for.
No, that is our fund. The Creative Communities is the one that's-
Okay.
Yeah, very similar name. So yeah, that was the 2016, 17 financial year.
All right. Okay. Anne?
I'm just interested in the embroiders, I feel. And the fact that the project is actually a nationwide project. It's not just a local project. And I see that, you know, I mean, I would really like to give them the full amount, because I think they look a bit poor if Christchurch doesn't really support this. They've never asked for money before, and it seems to be quite a significant project. I'm wondering why you decided not to give them the full amount?
The available balance of the discretionary response fund?
Right. I saw the zero there. I wondered if it might be- So there's no way that we can give them the full amount?
There are other avenues for the organization to come through. So they could look at the Creative Communities Scheme, which is the one we administer on behalf of Creative New Zealand. So they do have the opportunity to come through that.
And they know how to do that? And they know they've been given, you know, some guidance for that?
Yes, we can give them that advice.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Oh.
Wasn't quite clear. I just wanted to clarify the response, because in the report, it doesn't mention the funding history of this particular group. And also it goes on to say that funding support was for staff wages and rent during the establishment phase in the Arts Centre. So-
Sorry, you're going back to the other one?
Yes.
Yep, sorry. Anne had moved on from that. So we're going back to... Right.
Yeah, you're right to point that out. That is an error.
So this group, it isn't the Two Productions Theatre Company. It's a separate group.
So Two Productions Theatre Company is the production house. They also have, the Emerging Theatre Trust is their charitable arm. So the production company is who delivers the productions and events and holds the lease there. In order for them to be able to come for funding to Rata, Creative New Zealand and council, they also need a trust arm. So hence the application under that name.
And we've already funded them to be established. So why is it saying that this is continuing for their establishment?
So I couldn't hear the end of your question.
Why is it in the report saying that funding support is for their establishment phase?
It's to support the ongoing establishment in the Arts Centre. So they've been there for a year. And what we notice with a number of the arts organizations that we support, that there's generally a degree of handholding from funders for anywhere up to three years, for those looking at a business model approach, which is what this organization is looking at.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. And I think we're now up to the resolution to-
Have we done eleven?
Yes, to exclude the public. And we've got Monica Marona and Mina Nada to remain for item 22.
Yeah. So I understand that they want to deal with the item 20, Community Resilience Partnership.
View that we deal with the Community Resilience Partnership Fund paper in the open meeting. If that's a general view, we'll just take it out of the resolution and we'll just go on to it.
We're all happy with it, Leanne, just so long as staff have just gone through there to make sure that nothing compromises them. If they're comfortable, we're fine.
But I think people should just be careful in terms of questions breaking into privacy issues. In future, we'll workshop them before we come to a public consideration. So it's just, yeah, it's just been a process that has followed a pattern rather than being considered. So could we go to item 20 in the PX agenda? It's not going into the PX agenda, but that's where you'll find it. And could staff come to the table for that one?
Been told that Andrew and I need to take no part in the housing first.
Why?
Well, I was a bit nonplussed as well, but-
Excuse me, why?
Because-
Why? But so is the council. Are we all conflicted?
If you're saying it's not the connection that I'm thinking it might be, then that's fine.
No, no, no. No, I think, I mean, it's probably the most contributial of the elements. And I just don't think that there's a conflict there. I just think, I mean- No, exactly. Okay. Can just people note that we have two councillors that are on the board of the Otatahe Community Housing Trust. I don't personally think that that makes any issue in relation to the Housing First proposal, which is a matter in relation to a funding allocation, rather than something that has been sought. So, okay, so I think that probably rather than going to move these on block, I just want to establish that people ask the questions that they want to ask on the individual elements of it, so that we can then ascertain how we might do this. And there are two questions in relation to the Housing First proposal that I have. The first one is, what was this? Was the Christchurch Housing First Collaboration, I suppose I'll call it, did they ask the council to make a financial contribution to it? And the second is, does the government's announcement in relation to a significant amount of additional money for the Housing First model enable us to reconsider the amount that we might contribute?
So yeah, my understanding is that yes, they did ask council to fund this. And my understanding is also that no, the government's contribution is to add more to the government side of numbers of people that they will house, where this bit of the project is more about the social connection, the connection and also working with the people that are on the streets as well. The officer working on this isn't here, so they can't answer that question. But that's our understanding from following up.
No, that's fine. That clears that up for me. Sarah?
Thank you. I've got a process question. And I think this has been raised before. I just need an answer to it. So the committee resolution to seek community resilience partnership funding was on the 22nd of February. And a week later, the council resolved to ask staff to report to the committee on all- So no, sorry. Council resolution was on the 22nd of February, which asks staff to report on all council and external funding sources. And the report was already written that was going to the committee, which was there on the 4th of April. And it only referenced potential council sources of funding. And it referenced an earlier committee resolution and didn't reference the council resolution at all. So has the council resolution to look at external sources of funding for this been fulfilled? Or are we doing this ahead of that work?
It's our understanding that there's been a conversation with the Raja Foundation, but apart from that, there has not been any other investigation.
So the council resolution, where staff are requested to report to the committee on all council and external options to help fund the proposed initiatives. And then a week later, the committee decided on a council one without looking at external ones. Are we able to look at external before it comes back?
Yes, we could do that.
We're liable if you instruct us to do that.
Yeah. I mean, that was the council resolution of the 22nd of February.
Sorry, I've kind of-
I sent an email through last night, and I raised it in an informal a couple of weeks ago.
I haven't had time to read all my emails.
Yep.
Dion, Andrew, Phil, Mike.
Yes, so my question's around who's actually getting the money for the Housing First one. In the report, it says the mission, the Christchurch Methodist Mission will be the lead contractor in the programme. The mission will be the employer of the community development worker, blah, blah, blah. Then it just, full stop, Te Fariroimata has been working in Inner City East for over 20 years. Te Fariroimata. So I don't get what Te Fariroimata is doing, because it says the mission's getting the money.
They're one of the partners of this initiative. The fund holder for this grant, if it's accessible, will be the city mission, because that's where the workers will be based.
It just reads in here as though that bit's just been copied and pasted and stuck in there. I don't see any other reference to what they're specifically doing. So I'm just wanting to understand what their involvement will be, what the mission's involvement will be, and how to actually, like, who's actually doing what?
The mission will be the base and the employer of the manager and the two workers that are in this. And so they will be the fund holder. I'm not sure Jenny might be able to talk about the other partners that are involved in this.
Yeah, I just want to know if that's-
Paul, Jenny, can you shed any last word?
If that sentence has just been-
Paul could probably answer your question, councillor.
There's something missing there.
Certainly Te Fari-
It's on page 184 for anybody that wants to look at it. It's on page 184 of the report.
Certainly, Te Fari, to suspect them being involved in the Champions Group and a part of the wider network of agencies and organizations involved in the Housing First project. That's the core four organizations involved, or that the lead organizations will be in touch with and working with.
Yeah, but I'm still, within this report, I'm just trying to understand. It's almost as if, like, the mission has been written there, and then all of a sudden, Te Fariroimata has been replaced in the sentence structures with the mission, or instead of the mission. And I'm just confused. It's at the top of page 185. If you read it, you'll sort of see what I mean. And I'm just really confused, because it's not very clear who's actually running what and what's actually happening.
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, I mean, in terms of-
I mean, if we're granted $300,000, this needs to be very clear.
Sure, sure. No, it's most definitely through the mission as the lead organization involved in the Housing First partnership. I'm sorry, I can't really comment on exactly why the sentence structure is like that. In the report, I think it's just to somehow allude or make reference that other organizations involved, those who work very closely on the street in the east.
Yeah, I'm still quite confused at the-
I mean, I'm just reading it, and it says that the lead contractor is the Methodist Mission, and that they will be the employer of the community development worker and peer support worker, and provide supervision, training and support. But Te Fariroimata will be well able to provide day-to-day support and guidance for the workers. So it seems to me that the way it's structured is to identify that they'll be working alongside Te Fariroimata.
It's just not very clear at all.
No, I agree that the sentence structure is not very good, but it's, I think that's what it means.
No, it's a much contextual.
Yep. Andrew?
This is quite unusual, where we have partnerships across NGOs. Where one of the NGO is the fund holder for collaboration across a number of NGOs, rather than trying to spread out the money across everywhere. One's a fund holder, but all the partners are involved in the direction and management of the worker. Usually funders in a partnership, like MSG require one fund holder. We often do as well.
Yep. Andrew?
Thank you.
Thank you. So the funding that we're providing, that's coming from this fund, that would provide for the employment of the full-time community development worker, two part-time peer workers, peer working capacity building and so on, as detailed on the page in our report. Presumably, that is designed to reflect our role as a partner in this programme, that's what we've agreed to contribute to the programme.
Yes, that's correct. So, I mean, as the proposal notes, it's working in the whole community development, community connections area to help sustain the tenancies. So that's the additional extra value that council can provide in addition to the core Housing First proposal. I mean, certainly the evidence overseas shows, the more that you can work with folks to reinforce, develop and sustain those community connections within the neighbourhood, the better off, the better chance of success in the long run you have for a Housing First project.
So, just following on from that, if additional funding were able to be sourced from another provider such as RATA or some other funder, that funding wouldn't necessarily be applied to this aspect of the programme. My understanding is the more funding that's available to the programme, and I think this was reflected in the answer around government funding, the more funding is applied to the programme as a whole, the more homeless people can benefit from the programme?
No, it's still 50.
It's still 50, although I think there's an argument to be made that you would have a greater throughput or access if you can sustain people in their tenancies within their communities. So in other words, they'll need less long-term support through the Housing First partnership work.
Leon, perhaps Paul just might comment about what I'm going to say is correct, because just in relation to what the committee were asked to do in the beginning of April, the report there looks at the funding sources as was requested, and the different council funding sources, and the decision of the committee was to support the Community Resilience Partnership Fund. There is reference in the report too, though, to saying, with the known sources of external funding, that council could have access to support the programme. But the partnership could apply independently to sources such as RATA Foundation as been mentioned. So there was, the committee were aware of possible sources, but that, what the report really said, I guess implied, was that council wouldn't usually apply for funding on behalf of other agencies. I'm just making that comment, and Paul might bear me out as to whether or not the report that I'm reading is accurate.
I'll need to defer to colleagues on that one, who are more closely associated with writing the report.
Yeah, I think that it's not inconsistent with the point, though, that Sarah's raised, which is that we were to look to external ones. And so you're saying that external sources were looked for, but that we couldn't...
No, I'm saying that there weren't known sources of external funding that council could access.
Yes, but I don't know that that was the intention of the resolution on the 22nd of February. I think the intention of the resolution of the 22nd of February was in the spirit of the collaboration of the actual Housing First thing itself, was to look for external sources of funding to support it in partnership with the council. So, but I'm getting some advice on that. Mike?
The 300,000...
No, don't, don't...
The 300,000, is that anticipated to be exhausted within that year? So they'll be all used up within the year?
The actual initial request was for, I think, 600,000 over three years, but the funding for this fund was available for the two years, so I split it over the two years with an option to extend it if need be, the term of the grant.
Yeah, but do you think that therefore they'll only use 200,000 and therefore keep 100,000 aside, or will the whole 300,000 be used up in year one?
I don't know, sorry.
And does this fund allow therefore for that money to be carried over years?
Yes, it does. There is a process in place where they can apply to have it rolled forward.
Mike, Vicky?
I have a problem that we house 50 people without this, and then at the end of the time of adding another 300,000 per annum, we still house 50 people. So in terms of the biggest, best use of Housing First, I would have thought it was housing people. And we know that there is a key worker and other people who wrap around to provide the service that people need. So I'm struggling with 300,000 for effectively two full-time community workers, which seems an extremely well-paid community worker, community workers. I would much rather that we said, and I'm very happy that we do everything we can about homeless, because at the moment, we're dealing with it through the May's Welfare Fund. So I'm delighted that we do whatever, but I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be better if we just said, well, instead of housing 50, which doesn't actually solve the problem per year, we house 75 per year with the, and aim at that, but not worry about the fact that it's going into one full-time and two part-time community workers? Could we just be a bit more open about it? Because our aim is to house those people who are homeless. But the community relationship thing, like, two community workers, two full-time community workers for what will be effectively people who really have a wraparound service, really have the support, and then linking them to community organisations is one to 12, one to 25. I'm just wondering if there's another way that we could put the money in, achieve a better outcome for the big issue of homelessness that we face.
Sure. Well, I guess through you, Ms Mayor, we've got two. Ms Mayor, Ms Chair?
No, 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 they're just laughing because they know I hate Madam Mayor, you know, so I thought Ms Mayor was a sort of a kind of a step up from there.
A two-part answer, if I may, through me, and I think my colleague Jenny Huey can certainly add some further value around how the money can be spent and what other value can be added in terms of addressing some other related issues as well. My point would be that Housing First is not housing only, and I think councillor Buck alludes to that in terms of additional support services that are required to help them, which is why we're promoting here, or pushing, putting the idea to you of the community connections and community development work. So it's not just about putting a person in a house, there's a whole pile of other work related to that. In terms of the 50 people through the programme, that's what the Housing Partnership secure the funding for through their MSD contract. So notwithstanding the additional funding that's been made in this year's budget, that's something for the future, and it's not specifically part of this partnership proposal. The government has announced part of the funding in the budget is for the evaluation and monitoring of the programme. So one imagines that they'll want to see this in action for the thick 12 months before they continue and expand it. And through you, Ms Mayor, perhaps we can ask Jenny to answer that question as well. Get through her word.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to maybe talk about a way in which we might be able to add some extra value to this Housing First project by looking more broadly across the other collaborations that the council's involved in at the moment, and as a number of councillors have been actively involved in both the Housing First, the Sex-Based Street Worker Project, and more relevantly, the Inner City Street Solutions Project, which is working around primarily people who are begging in the inner city. Now, that group has many of the same stakeholders, and we've been actively seeking funding from other sources through the people in the partnership, who are the city mission, not so much the Methodist Mission, they'd be more on the periphery, although they have known what's happening. So we think there's a real need for a very close connections between Housing First and the Inner City Street Solutions Project. So as you know, some people in the inner city who are begging are homeless and some aren't homeless, but they all have similar issues. There has been a project going on, which is no longer funded, working with the people who are directly in the streets, and the partners to the Inner City Solutions Project would really like to see a really, really strong connection with Housing First, with these community development workers. So we're wondering if a dual role could be developed between the workers who could still be based in the Housing First model, but who could work directly on the Inner City Street Solutions Project. And there has been some quite lengthy discussion around that, so maybe that's a way forward.
I was just a little bit unclear, there was an announcement on the 4th of May, 100 million to tackle homelessness, and it said that the government had boosted funding for ongoing services for more than 900 households in the Housing First Programme in Auckland, Christchurch, Taronga, Hamilton, Wellington, Lower Hut, and that was 20.5 million. The government then goes on, I mean, there's a number of quotes around the importance of Housing First, and it says Housing First provides housing with no readiness conditions. It also provides wraparound support and services for as long as needed to help people stay in house and improve lives. So two questions from that. One, are we aware of what the minister's announcement means in terms of our programme, given that...
Sorry, that was the very first question I asked, and it was answered, which is...
Well, I wasn't, sorry, clear what the answer was.
Okay, the answer, well, I heard the advice that we received, which was that it was to extend the number of people that were able to be housed under the programme, that it wasn't for, and that's not what this proposal's for.
What's the new number?
Well, they won't have allocated yet, will they?
It's evolving, as I understand it. MSD staff have been involved in the street begging project, and they're telling us that's an evolving situation, but they're still saying they support a solution around community development workers, working to build capacity with these people, and they especially won't be directly involved with people who are begging, who aren't necessarily homeless. It's an evolving situation at the moment within the government.
So we had a meeting with the minister, I don't know what happened there. There was, there's a new budget announcement for more money for Housing First, but we don't know how many numbers we're getting, and yet we're being asked to make a significant contribution to one of the principles of it.
Sure. As we've answered before, I mean, the existing contract is for 50 people per year, so it's the existing contract that the Housing First Partnership here have with the government. Yes, in Budget 2018, it states boost funding for existing services, support more than 900 households in the Housing First Programme, Auckland, Christchurch, Taronga, Wellington and the Hut. So they've allocated 20 million for that, so that's in the future.
A bit like councillor Buck's point, if we're going to agree to this funding today, then can we actually go back to government and say, it's great you've made this announcement, we're happy to contribute, on the basis that you provide X amount more spaces, given that you've announced it? So that we've actually got a sort of partnership around extending the numbers that this will go to.
One imagines that we can make that point in the future with government, yes, we understand you've budgeted further funds, we would like to see the service further rolled out here. 50 isn't dealing with the total number, there's a higher demand, so yes, of course we can continue those discussions.
Dion?
I just wanted to see if you guys are aware of the job that's currently advertised on the Christchurch City Council for the marginalised community liaison person for the Christchurch Central Library?
Yes, I'm aware of it. The libraries have been involved in the streets, Inner City Street Collaboration Project right from the start, and we've been liaising with them about this.
Yeah, so the job is a full-time one in the library, build relationships with marginalised and homeless communities, and the organisation's supporting them. Here's a plug for the 18 people watching YouTube, if you want a job, that you've got till the end of the day to apply, $50,000 to $68,000 salary, which is fantastic, but what's, what is this? You know, I just want to know that there's not going to be any sort of double up of what we're actually doing, because, I mean, these homeless people are marginalised, I don't want them to be going over there and over there and over there and feel like they've been pulled between Arthur and Martha. You know, they need a single point of entry where they're actually going to be able to find what they need and then actually get the support they need. So are we doubling up here, or...
Well, as far as my conversations have taken place with other staff who are involved in this, we wouldn't be doubling up. The library service is about facilitating people within the libraries and the programmes, making sure they've got programmes aligned to people who are in that particular community, who would be using the library service. So it's not, definitely not a doubling up.
Oh, the names.
Thank you. My question's really is around the scope that Ministry of Development will be funding, just for clarity, and you may have indicated this before, but my understanding is that in fact the whole community connectivity part, which the report refers to, and I guess that community development part for people who are homeless who have virtually no other connections apart from their own group with homeless people, that in fact, that's the part that in fact the report is asking for funding for from council, and it's particularly because that's not covered by the contract with MSD.
Yeah, that's true. I think John's got a suggestion as a way forward here.
Yeah. Answer the question, Jenny, and I'll go through the chair.
Yes, well, that is absolutely correct. It's about capacity building and looking after people and assisting them to make connections. The exactly same work that we need to work with people from the bottom up, with the people who are homeless and the people who are in the street and the people who are involved in various other activities around the city.
I'm just going to just sound people out here, because, you know, we've got a very full agenda today and a number of other events that we have to attend to. So what I would suggest is that we park this proposal and deal with the rest of the paper if people are quite comfortable with that, and we'll get a further report back on this item for the next meeting. Okay? So on that basis, is somebody prepared to move the balance of the recommendations? Sarah? Seconded by Mike. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried, and we'll get a report back on that item. So now I would like to move that we resolve to exclude the public for all of the reasons set out on the agenda, that Monica Marona and Mina Nada be invited to remain for item 22, and that Paul Munro be invited to remain after the public, yeah, for items 27 and 28. So, and a second, and that the resolution includes the additional items set out on 84 to 88 of the agenda. So seconded by Andrew. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried.